This conference will now be recorded.
Fifteen seconds.
I'm down.
All right, it's 5:30, we call a meeting to order. Uh, roll call?
Commissioner Beeson?
Here.
Commissioner Spielman?
Here.
Mr. Stover?
Here.
Mr. Tweedy?
Here.
Eric Warren?
On vacation.
Opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
There you go.
Let's pray. Well, thank you for this day, and thank you that we can assemble together freely in this country, and we just pray that you be with our country, and may we gain some unification over the events of the last few days around your loving grace and the things that you impart to us. Right now, we just thank you for this body of commissioners, I pray that you bless them, I pray that you give them wisdom, I pray that you help them with decisions they have to make. We thank you, and are mindful of all of our city workers, our first responders, and and each department head, and all the things that are done in the name of the city. I pray that you bless them, give them wisdom this next week, the next couple of weeks, and I pray that you be with our citizens, we thank you so much for them, pray that you bear the burdens of those that are going through things, be with those that are launching out to do great things in the city. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
If you'd like, please join us for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or deletions?
No, there is not. I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, words and proclamations. Commissioner Spielman?
Whereas the National Disability Independence Day is celebrated each year on July 26th to commemorate the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, on July 26, 1990, and whereas the legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities, and whereas ADA provides protection from employment and other forms of discrimination by reducing barriers and in charging per septies, increasing full participation in community life, and providing better access to goods, services, and communications for people with disabilities. And whereas although ADA has helped millions of Americans with disabilities to achieve equal treatment for disability individuals, there still are barriers to public accommodations of which governments, corporations, and business owners need to be aware. And the full promise of ADA only will be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to implement it fully, and whereas therefore the year and on the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, this city and its Equal Opportunity and Accessibility Advisory Board celebrate and recognize the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equal and inclusive and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, the mayor of Arkansas City, Kansas, does hereby proclaim Friday, July 26, 2024, as National Disabilities Independence Day in the city of Arkansas, and hereby reaffirms that the city and its citizens will continue to work forward full compliance of the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Thank you, Commissioner Spielman. Okay, on the agenda, we have two items, approval of the regular meeting minutes, July 2nd, and approve a resolution authorizing a public meeting for the governing body to attend a land bank board trustees meeting at 5:15 PM Tuesday, August 6th, in the commission room at City Hall located at 118 West Central Avenue, Arkansas.
I move we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business. City manager.
Okay, so we have an ordinance for me tonight granting Idea Tech Telecom LLC a contract for a franchise agreement. What they intend to do is construct fiber optics to home businesses throughout the community, and what this would do would allow them to access our our right of ways and those types of things to construct that. I know they were here on the, at the work session and kind of gave you guys a background on the company and what they're planning on doing. They've been around several, you know, for a while now, they're a local Kansas company, started here and have grown here, and they're they're putting fiber internet systems in communities across the state, and what kind of next on the list there of communities that they would like to serve. Again, they'll provide high-speed internet, fiber optic, true fiber optic to homes and businesses of the community.
And this, and they're, something I think, they can come in no matter what, because it's a, we're just partnering with them and getting this, doing it the right way.
Telecom and specifically fiber and stuff like that, they've gotten some kind of special things from the legislature, the last ever, they can, they can kind of come in, do what they want, they're working with us though on a franchise agreement and just, you know, where they're going to place their lines and just trying to, trying to be a good partner with the city on utilizing our right of ways and so.
I'm still trying to figure out how they get them under the streets and highways. It's, if you can't use that machine, he said, you just come in and make a little slit in the ground. I don't know how they're doing that.
They bore it.
Do they bore it?
Yeah.
Okay. They never explained that to us, I asked him a question about, what do you do with people that have patios, how you get it to the house?
The different stores.
Yeah.
The streets and roads they can bore.
Right. And if people want it, then they have to contact them to have it put in their home.
Correct, yeah, and so what they'll, they'll make accommodations for every home in town, although they won't bring lines to every house, but once they get installed to it, once they're to a point, they'll, I would imagine they'll probably start opening up portions of the city when they, when they get in there and installed, and they'll, they'll have a pretty good marketing campaign and reach out to the citizens and offer their their services to them and get them a choice on on their internet.
Make a motion that we grant Idea Tech Telecom LLC a contract franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications system in the city of Arkansas City.
Second. Give that one to Diane. Okay, any further discussion then?
I just want to point out that this will be going down the alley and not down in front of the houses.
I would say that's for the most part, I mean, there may be some exceptions, but that's the intent would be, yes, in ours.
If you places down that doesn't have alleys.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, number two.
Okay, so we have a resolution authorizing the city to sell property to One Gas of Tulsa, Oklahoma for $21,000. I don't know, we have a app on the screen there where that's properties at, it's at Mill Road, just off of Seven.
Is it the bypass?
Yeah, it just needs the bypass on Mill Road there, there's a triangle, a piece of property, come off there, and one guy would like to purchase that. We, we've already had it surveyed and got all the easement work done, there are some water and sewer lines in that area that the city has, and so those have been, the easements have been put in place on that, and they know about them, so they're interested in buying up for $1,000.
Are they just going to build a building, or are they just going to use it for storage of their vehicles?
My understanding, there'll be some type of a building on it, yeah.
Working for the city before, and I've said this in the Friday work session as well, that track of land takes about four hours, five hours, takes a lot of diesel, takes a bat wing to take care of it, so I think it's a welcome thing for somebody else to take it over and do the upkeep and care of that, so I think it's a win-win for us.
Having said.
I have a question. On when we're selling property that belongs to the city, I'm concerned about the process. It seems to me that, and if we have property we want to sell, that's fine, but put it up for sale and let the highest bidder buy it. If you don't do that, then maybe you sold the property to somebody who's your buddy or wanted it, I didn't know it was for sale, and I would have given more for it. I mean, it just seems to me that rather than, and I may go to you about some property that nobody's ever even thinking about, and you say, fine, I'll sell it to you, John, and somebody else will say, gosh, I would have liked to have that property, I have no idea, sell for sale, so I just, to sell property to one individual who happened to approach you, or you approached him, seems like a very poor process to me. If you have property that you want to sell, let's sell it, sell it to the highest bidder. And if it's a control issue, you still have that, you can tell me or whoever that you control that zoning or whatever, so that's my thoughts on what you're doing.
How did that show come about, did One Gas approach us?
Yeah, One Gas has been looking for a, for property to purchase, to do some expansion that they're wanting to do, and that particular property fit their needs, and they approached us about it, it, so yeah, that's, we weren't actually trying to sell it to anybody.
And the city has been taking care of it for probably 25 years with nothing along with it.
Well, One Gas is the parent company, is Kansas Gas, which is the company that serves our gas needs here, so it'll, most likely it's going to be some type of facility to serve, to serve the service of our citizens, so.
Do we have something about how many acres that is?
Yeah.
I was guessing five.
Yeah, it's a little under five, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
It's in the contract, yeah, 4.48 acres.
So I have, no one's going to address my process issue, so I'll address it again, you had somebody approach you that wants to buy this, and so you're willing to sell it to them, so you say, fine, I'll sell it to you, but the process is, we will advertise we're going to sell it, and you can bid this much, and nobody outbid you, fine.
Is that the process? We just kind of, but it's not?
I'll just say, there's no law that requires that in this, there are certain things we have to, we do have to bid on, but there's not, most of the transactions that we do, and we do quite a few of them with the city, on small pieces of real estate, you know, after we tear a building down or whatever, the process is usually comes together whether, where there's an interested party already there, and that's, so that's.
We've done this, we've done this several years.
It's been the practice at least since 2018, since I've been around.
Yeah, we've done it a couple of times this year, actually.
Yes.
All of our land bank properties are handled, when somebody comes and wants to buy one, they're like, I said, for sale.
Has an interest.
It's common knowledge that it's out there for sale.
I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
That's okay.
In this particular, you're looking at a very undesirable piece of property, as it's been described, and fortunate to have a buyer.
Yes.
And at a good price.
Yes.
It is.
Do we have a, do we have a motion in a second, or?
I'm just getting ready to make a motion. I move that we authorize the city of Arkansas City to enter into an agreement for the sale and purchase of real estate with One Gas Incorporated of Tulsa, Oklahoma, where the total sale price not to exceed $21,000.
Second. Okay, so voice and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Number three.
Okay, so we have a resolution approving the notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and set a date for a public hearing. Jennifer, and you either?
So by state statute, we have to notify the county clerk by resolution of our intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, so through the discussions we've had, I believe that number is going to be 64.5 mils is what we'll put in the resolution, and I do have to notify her by the 20th of July, so. And then this also sets the date for the public hearing for September the 3rd.
And then, and I know inflation and everything's gone up, we were, we had a goal of 63.
So our current mill levy is 63.074 is this year's mill levy.
And we did a lot of, I know, just want everybody to know, we did a lot, and Jenny and Randy especially, and the people in charge, they did a lot of work on this budget, and it was very difficult to get this even this close, and Commissioner Spielman came up with a great idea, Commissioner Tweedy came up with a good idea that was even to get us closer, with the inflation the way it is and the price of living going up, I think that this is very, very reasonable, and we're being very frugal with the citizens, but anyhow, I am all for this, go ahead and go in above it.
And again, adjustments can be made, can't raise it, we can come down, but this is a starting point for the county clerks to put those tax statements together that'll go out to all citizens, so.
We did hold a year ago and made it, but we also had to do a lot of cutting to do so, things that we really did need, so.
Right, and we got behind the weight ball for this year.
Yeah.
We were very lucky.
We deferred a lot last year, that's going to have to be addressed next year, and to be honest, we're still recovering from that million dollar loan as well, so.
Make a motion that we approve the notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate and set the date for a public hearing at 5:30 PM on September 3rd, 2024, for the purpose of creating and answering objections to taxpayers relating to their revenue neutral rate and the amount of ad lorry and tax proposed use of all sides.
Second.
Hey, voice and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, city manager updates or reminders?
Okay, so we received a notification from K D A G that we have received a Kansas Public Water Supply Loan in the amount of $2,089,000 with 100% forgiveness, and what that will do is put in a green, green filter, so green sand filter at the water treatment plant to help treat our manganese issues within the water system, so we'll have to do some more work on the application, the final application of that, but we've been pre-approved for that, and it is 100% forgive loan, so. On July 18th, we have a mandatory harassment training for all city employees, and if you would like to attend, we have two sessions, one at 10 AM and one at 1:30, just if you're interested in seeing what that's about, then welcome to attend. On July 23rd, we're going to have a public open house for the proposed master plan for the city-owned property, the 101 acres that was purchased up on Skyline in 2015, that'll be held at the First Church of the Nazarene from 5 to 7 p.m. on July 23rd, so that'll be for public input on that master plan and tweak that a little bit. The league conference this year is October 10th through 12th in Wichita, that'll be a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this year, so if any of the commissioners would like to attend all or any of it, one, one day or whatever, just let us know, we'll, it's just, sign up for that. I got the updated numbers today on the community CPI for the Midwest, so I laid that on your desk, just kind of, and just another, it inched up another, you know, inflation just keeps going up, so, but that would be the kind of idea where that's at. And then, I don't know, we got an interesting call, Jennifer and I did, this, today on our PBC bond, you know, we're going to be paying down some excess money, well, apparently you can make too much interest on the funds that, so when we collect those, the sales tax, those are turned over to the trustee, and then they can do different things, well, apparently some of that money that the trustee was holding made more interest than what the yield on the bonds were, so that, they're taxing that bonds, and so they're not allowed to do that, so it looks like that out of that, out of those redemption funds, we'll have to pay a little bit of money to the IRS, because those funds earn more interest than they could have, so is there anything you want to?
They make too much money. Good job.
Yeah, and the bond counsel was kind of explaining this to us, this is the first time he's ever had to make a phone call like that, so again, we're the kind of, we're always doing something.
Hey, I, credit to Jenny, great job.
Anyway, that was kind of an interesting call, but we'll, we'll have some more, we have some paperwork and stuff we'll have to fill out on that. I think that's all I have. Oh, there was some, yeah, I forgot the, there was some updates in there on the projects, I provided a updated list on things he's working on, and PBC has their updated list on things. We did have a meeting for the golf tire rehabilitation project, that will get started August 1st, obviously they'll have to come in and set up, set up for probably about a week or so before they start working, but the logo has all been worked out with Cree Stone, our guys are going to have to do some work on getting the, probably do some kind of pre-runs on taking the water tower offline and pressurizing with the, with pumps up there to keep it running smoothly, so there'll be a little work here in the meantime to make sure that we can keep everything running right, but that'll be running, going pretty soon. Nick, is there anything that you, on any of these projects you wanted to? No?
Am I seeing that piece, that they are going to be driving through the streets on 7/15 this week?
Yes, they were, they were yesterday and today.
Is hike bike trail moving forward at all?
As far as we know.
Everything we've seen, it looks like it will go out to, for this fall, so, yes, everything looks very positive.
Yeah, it's taken a long time to get it this far.
Because of, I got finished, it looks like it this time, so.
Okay, commissioners, thank you, Randy, commissioners, anything that you'd like to bring up? Everybody signed up? Financial, financial summary?
Those in the back of the packet, I don't think there's anything.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, fair enough. Yes, sir.
Barry, how, how are you coming along with the sign ordinance?
Josh is working on another project that we're going to incorporate those two things together and bring to you.
Okay.
He sent me a proposal, some change wording to some of our, to part of our ordinances, and I sent some changes back to him, he's put those in final form, he will, he will bring both of those things, I think he says he's going to take them to Planning Commission first, because they can kind of work hand in hand, the signs not so much, but the other, and then, and then have something for you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yeah, just, go ahead, Randy.
Yes.
Could you come up to the podium, please, and state your name and address, and I'll start you at five minutes when you start.
Okay, I'm here, and I'm talking to a lot of you individuals about Wilston Park, I'm a friend of the park, and I think it's very important how we deal with that, and there's a lot of talk of a, the, the master plan being reactivated, and my view is that when it was first shown, that the only thing that was publicly approved was the restoration of the train, which occurred at a cost of $70,000, which VJ Welkin's paid, so, but I think maybe Randy disagrees with that, maybe thinks that all that, or I got the impression that you thought everything had been publicly been and had been approved to go, and I don't believe that's the case, so my first question is, it's, am I the only one that thinks only one thing was approved when the original master plan had gone out, and if not, what master plan are we talking about? There's been two or three versions, and is everything approved? There are things, is a library going to be built, is a rotunda going to be, and I don't think any of you would know or agree as to what's on it and what's going to happen, so. And it's extremely important, because that is our Central Park, a historic park, 100-year-old train, the only train that people can get on and play on, the rotunda was built, was at Chautauqua in 1914, all types of historical speakers were spoke there, it sits right in the middle of our community, and it's very important how we treat it. Now, I also heard at a work session that there had, there had been some approval for somebody to build condos on the hospital property, and I'm totally against that. Central Park in New York City is surrounded by the most valuable real estate in the world, they don't build on it, it's a park, and, and I want you to think of this differently than property that's for development or a truck stop, this park belongs to the people. This is, this is not something that we just do what your opinion ought to be done, or my opinion ought to be done, it's the people's park, and, and I don't know what was signed on building on the hospital property, and I don't, can any of you tell me who's going to do it, and what's going to be done, or did you vote on it? These are questions I have.
It was voted on, we do have the, the master plans, which we could, we could get those to him?
Well, yeah, there was enough to be put out, there was proposals made, there was a proposal that's been selected, but there's been no official agreements done yet on anything, so, there's been no official action by this, by the commission.
Okay, so there, there is no agreement with anybody right now to build?
No, those types of things are still being discussed, yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll interject also, the other part of it was the pavilion for the farmer's market, that was part of the master plan, and it has gone forward, so it's not just the train that's gone forward, it's just one.
No, I understand that, but, and, and my point would be, yes, that went forward, and 307,000 was spent on it, and, and paid for by 200,000 from Cree Stone and others, so there wasn't outlay of money, but what I'm saying is, and that's why we're in the rich, but, so, but, but as the original, when that was unveiled, that was not approved, the only thing that was approved by, and Nick Hernandez and Josh White made that presentation, and there were questions on all these other things, there may have this, this, and it was specifically answered, folks, this is, this is a brainstorming, this is possibilities, all we're talking about tonight is the restoration of the train, and it was pretty unanimously, I mean, who would be opposed to that? So yes, that went forward, yes, it was part of the master plan, so now whether that's a good idea or not, I don't care, because it's already happened, and there's no use debating that, but, so is that going to continue to happen, is what I'm saying? Are, are people of the view that everything has been? Are, are people of the view that everything has been, you know, publicly vetted and?
I don't know that we're ready to make that decision yet, John. It'll come up at a later time and we're going to take your comments into, into. Consideration.
Okay, that being said, let's fast forward. So there is no agreement as yet to build on the hospital property?
Well, yeah, kind of, and yeah, I know. Let me direct you back to the college when they had their master plan. They didn't have anybody vote on that until it come time to construct the buildings. That's when they voted on it. And that goes back to when Nelson was here. So this is kind of the same thing. When we, when we get to where we are able to do something, that's when we'll take it under consideration.
Okay, then, and by the way, kudos for your eighth street and the public, you know, what you're going to do out there at the church and stuff. That's, since it's, it's clear to me that nobody can really tell me, okay, this, this, and this has been approved because of the nature of what we're dealing in. I would say a step at a time, if you're considering doing something, let's be very public about it and get the input.
Mr. Syrup, we've been way over our time. I would suggest if you'd like to continue this, that we, that you get on the agenda for our next meeting and actually get on the agenda instead of a walk-in.
Okay, and I will be here till I die.
Right.
To, to help save the park.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anything else?
Move for adjourned.
Second. Adjourned. Need a gavel.
Let me just break.